Good evening, everyone. It is October 9th. Welcome to the Board of Education regular meeting. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Can you call the roll, please?
Herzog.
Here.
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 Carolyn.
Here.
Here.
And now I'd like to invite Dame James Ducek up here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice
Thank you, James. You did a wonderful job in doing this.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to invite Joe Pitch to the front table to give us some highlights of South Park.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, yes, so, South Park this year, we're in a really nice spot to start the year. I look at a lot of what we're trying to do around literacy as well as SEL. When thinking about literacy, our big focus is this year are really investing in our staff when it comes to professional development that we're looking at doing. And when we look at that, it's coming from a disciplinary literacy standpoint. So, how are we focusing on supporting reading, writing, and thinking in every context, not just in literacy class? So, how are we looking at teaching vocabulary across the board in tech education and social studies so that we're all pulling in the same direction, supporting our kids, not just relying on that one class, to really focus on that work? So, that's something that we've seen some success with in the past years. Looking at last year, we finished straight around 47% proficient. Starting the year, we were around 30% proficient. So, really looking and seeing that growth and how we can continue to build upon that this year. So, very excited about the work we have planned for that with our staff, really investing in them because they're the ones sitting in front of kids every day, supporting that work there. So, really excited about that, looking at our social-emotional learning. Our Sabre's window was just about to, we're getting our data in this week. So, sitting down with my counselor and looking at how are we supporting our kids in running different lunch groups around different needs when it comes to academic skills of how are we organizing ourselves, how are we managing our time, looking at anxiety. So, really trying to support our whole students academically with literacy and then also with our social-emotional learning there. So, a lot of great things are happening. Very happy to be in South Park. Yeah. Or maybe also in Fermi Street there?
No, I just want to thank you for hosting the community session on the facilities plan. So, we appreciate that. We had over 40 people attend that, were able to give tours, and so it was a really good opportunity to be able to see the buildings. So, thanks for accommodating us on that night.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we want to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are in the ancestral homelands, the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnabago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
And now we have the approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to see any modifications to the agenda? Okay, then we will accept the agenda by acclamation. Board President's Report. I have the retirement recognition, it's always sad when we have retirements, but happy for the people that are retiring. We have one this evening, and that's Mary Busby, cross-categorical teacher assistant at Carl Trager, and was there since 1993, so certainly has been with the district for a long time. We want to thank her for all of her efforts and wish her well. Dr. Herzog, do you have anything to add?
I think you're a mind reader, Mrs. Wyman. Actually, I do. I've known Mary Busby during my tenure as a member of the staff here and now as a board member. I've always found Mary to be a very dedicated professional. She really epitomizes the focus of students first, and she's also been an outstanding advocate for the teacher assistants in our district. She will be sorely missed. She has certainly made a wonderful contribution to the students, the families, her colleagues, and the Oshkosh community in general. So, I too would echo your sentiments of thanking her and wishing her all the best for a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Superintendent's Report.
All right, so we're happy to have back for the second straight meeting, so our student reps. So, we'll check in with Sparty. It's been homecoming weeks, so we have had a lot going on. So, we'll kick it over to Faith to start with tonight.
All right, so let's check in with Sparty, some October updates. Obviously, homecoming happened this week. Last week, Oshkosh North had their, it was their homecoming week, and then their theme this year was a night in Paris. So, Vincent's staff were able to participate and dress up, participate in games and pep assemblies, and then the parade that was also leading up to the homecoming football game. There was also a retiree lunch, inviting all retired teachers to Oshkosh North to have a lunch with us. We were able to get some of their stories, what they taught, and so on. And then homecoming senior royalties was also announced on Friday on that pep rally. The winners were Hannah Pfizer and me. During this time, we also had our hour-long Excel sections where students were able to make fun crafts to celebrate the homecoming. I know Chemistry Club also made boba, ice cream in a bag, and slime. And then Ms. Klein also made some pumpkins out of old books, gnomes, as you can see in the picture, and a lot more. And then we also started a new tradition for powder puff, and the juniors won this year, unfortunately. So, for the homecoming parade and the game, clubs were able to participate in the parade as always, and they rode on their flows during caning and waving around at people in the neighborhood. This year, we had a new route at Oshkosh North, or to St. Benistah, Oshkosh North. And then during the Oshkosh North football games, we won 15, or 58 through 13 against Green Bay West. And then some fall sports, Oshkosh North High School's football team has won five games and lost two. Soccer has won four games and lost two. Volleyball has not won any matches yet. And then dance team has also been working on a new choreography, and then they're also preparing for the winter season as well. And then some Spartans succession, or success. So, a big congrats to Lee Dowey and Conrad Bowles, I can't really pronounce the second last name, Juzinski, for receiving the letter of commendations from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, presented by our Assistant Principal, Mr. Torgerner. And then they're also recognized for their exceptional academic promise and placed among the top students in the nation in the PSAT scores. And then Oshkosh North Yearbooks was also selected to be in the Wallsworth Gallery of Excellence. And then art of the Spartans, senior art students wrapped up their animal eye drawing with oil pastels, and they were able to present that outside of the school hallway, so when you walk in, you're able to see them. And then students in photography and Photoshop classes experiment with five different applications of creativities, as you can see in the photos. And then musical Spartans, small group of Spartans of Oshkosh North Band students traveled to Titan Stadium for high school band day. They had an early morning rehearsal and participated in today's game, or in that game by marching in the stadium, performing in the halftime show. And then Oshkosh North Band also led the homecoming parade to Oshkosh North, and they also performed in the halftime show. Thanks for checking this party.
Thank you for sharing.
Excellent. And congratulations, Faith.
Thank you.
All right, Joy.
All right, so what's going on Wildcats for October? Past events, we've had lots and lots of sporting events, new swim records, actually, we just got a new one last night as well, activity fair and hallway decorating. Football is currently at two wins and five losses, another win, which is good. Varsity volleyball, almost undefeated, eight wins and one loss, taking home a really historic win against, I believe, Appleton North. I want to say it's the first win they've had against them in almost 15 years, I believe. Boys varsity soccer has five wins, two ties, and five losses. Cross-country, they just had their nightfall classics meet. Boys took ninth overall, and girls placed second overall, which was awesome. Varsity swim and dive, actually, it's three wins and one loss now. We took home the win by eight points last night, taking home a pool record for Appleton West, Kimberly, as well as being .01 seconds away from another pool record there. But we've also had 500 free records, which was what was broken last night by Kirsten as well. I think this is her third record she broke this year already. And Etta also broke two freshman records in the 200 free and 100 free. The activity fair is just a week where most of the clubs at West pretty much hold W-hours, which is our responsive scheduling time where we get to choose which teacher we want to go to for that 20, 30 minutes of the day. And each of the different clubs kind of host like an informational session to kind of get people interested in joining clubs around the school. So, that was very successful. That was two weeks ago. Hallway decorating, since it is homecoming week currently, we did hallway decorating on Sunday, so the top left with the green is the junior hallway, the gold is the freshman hallway, the white is the sophomores, and the silver, you can't really see a lot of the silver, but that's a seniors. Upcoming events, we do have homecoming, parent-teacher conferences are coming up on the 14th, multiple conference meets, as well as a bunch of concerts coming up. So, for homecoming week, our dress-up days, Monday was comfy day as usual, that's a big hit. Tuesday was Ancient Greece versus Greece the Musical. So, kind of play on words there a little bit. Today was Adam Sandler Day, another really successful day. And then tomorrow, we have our class color day because it's the pep rally. So, staff are blue, freshmen are gold, sophomores are white, juniors are green, and seniors are silver, so it matches our hallways. And then the game theme, the underclassmen are gardeners, and the upperclassmen are Greek gods and goddesses.
Seems fair.
Yeah. I mean, our theme is Greek garden, so you got to put the garden in there somewhere.
You know, listen to the Gladiator.
The parade is at 5:00 PM on Friday, and that's around West. We're not ending at Titan this year, just around the block. And we have a tailgate at Titan also on Friday that starts at 6:00. Game starts at 7:00, and it's versus Hortonville. Hopefully, we'll win. Our record is less than amazing, but that's okay. It's fun. And then our dance is 8 to 11 on Saturday, and that would be held at West. Just some other events we have, we have the pep rally, as I mentioned, that's on Thursday. Powder puff football, unfortunately, juniors and seniors both lost to the freshmen and sophomores, but that's okay. So, they played today. I did not hear who the winner was, but they did play today. Kickball, that was Monday. We also did Minute to Win It on Monday, which is just a bunch of games that take a minute, basically, to see who can get the most points and then decide a winner. Ironman volleyball, that was also throughout the week. I have not heard a winner, but I believe it is over. Cross-country conference takes place on the 17th, and that's at Kekana, both boys and girls. Swim and dive conference, swim conference is November 2nd, and dive conference is the date before, on November 1st, and both of those take place at NINA. There's a choir concert on October 15th at 7:30 PM, and that takes place at Alberta Kimball. They've got some really good music, so I would highly recommend going to it. Same with orchestra, which is October 2nd, and this one's at 7:45 instead of 7:30. And then the band concert, October 24th. Again, we have some fun music this year, so hopefully, if you can attend, I would highly recommend, and that's again at 7:30. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Joy.
I just got to say, I don't know what's better, the Adam Sandler outfits today or the middle schoolers dressing up like elderly people.
I was getting, the kids were getting pictures on their phones all morning getting ready, and some of those costume or outfits today were just fantastic. It was great. Thank you.
Excellent. Nothing like homecoming week, so. All right, I'll do my best to follow that. I don't know, it's much fun in that regard, but we do have some really important stuff going on across the district, and I've been very active the last couple of weeks. So, I want to start over at E. Cook. Excited to share a wonderful opportunity of student engagement from our CKLA field test over at E. Cook Elementary. As a reminder, our CKLA is our new science reading-based literacy curriculum, being field-tested in elementary schools across the district. Our second graders at E. Cook just completed their first knowledge unit focusing on fairy tales and folk tales. Not only were students captivated by the classics like The Emperor's New Clothes and Beauty and the Beast, but their enthusiasm was strong as they eagerly anticipated each day's new story and vocabulary words. As you can see in the photos, students created puppets as part of their culminating end-of-the-unit activity to retell these tales, demonstrating both their creativity and comprehension. So, this is exactly the kind of joy in learning and academic growth that we had hoped to see in our field test thus far. So, we appreciate all the hard work and the investment of our teachers, students, and families as they help support that progress as we're moving forward. So, we're off to a strong start. It's become an annual tradition, and congratulations to the Oshkosh West Varsity Baseball Team for achieving a 3.3, 3.37 team GPA for the seventh straight year, receiving an American Baseball Coaches Association Team Academic Excellence Award. It's a great accomplishment for our varsity baseball players and a testament to Coach Gerhardt's leadership in the program. So, congratulations to all those boys from last spring. As you may remember, the first weeks of the school year were remarkably hot this year, and while not all of our schools are air-conditioning, our staff and students found unique ways to be able to cool off and stay focused in our heat. With this understanding, one of our, one of our elementary schools, Reed Elementary Schools, had PTO members partnered with the Neighborhood Association to address the heat-related concerns. This collaboration resulted in a donation of water coolers, supplies, and equipment to help students and staff feel more comfortable. This shows how our PTO members actively create, actively seek creative solutions and build community partnerships with our schools to enhance our students' learning environments while we are working on longer-term solutions. So, we really want to just appreciate everybody's partnership in getting through those first couple of weeks, and we're very grateful to be able to have the fall weather upon us right now. So, thanks for those who contributed to our fundraising. Our Education Foundation recently celebrated two remarkable community partnerships. Before the start of the school year, a local business, a choir restoration, hosted a unique mini golf tournament, the goal to fundraise to cover classroom expenses that teachers often take on. The event raised nearly $5,000 for our teachers and classrooms. We're also pleased to celebrate our continued partnership with Hoffmaster. For the second consecutive year, this local company donated $10,000 to our Education Foundation to support field trips for fourth graders across our eight elementary schools. Across eight elementary schools. This initiative particularly benefits schools with higher economic needs, allowing students to explore beyond classroom walls and fostering their curiosity through meaningful, hands-on learning experiences. So, we're grateful for the generosity of our community and for the hard work and advocacy of our Education Foundation under the leadership of Teresa Durin. So, thank you so much for all of that continued support. Last week, we had our career and technical education teachers participating in our Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce's first-ever Link to Learn Networking Breakfast, launching an exciting new chapter of collaboration. Hosted at Oshkosh West, this dynamic event brought together 40 local businesses and our career and technical education teaching staff for meaningful connections and collaborative collaboration opportunities. The morning featured student culinary arts showcases, tours of West, West Career and Technical Education classrooms, and an introduction of the Career and Technical Education Teacher Flip Book designed to facilitate our partnerships. These initiatives are here to be able to build stronger bridges between education and industry, creating valuable opportunities for our students while addressing workforce development needs in our communities. So, and thank you for the Chamber of Commerce and their continued partnership in that regard. We love to see these familiar faces, students at, students and staff at Oshkosh North, as was earlier mentioned. Recently welcomed back retired North staff in a celebratory luncheon. Retirees were treated to food prepared by Ms. Fortner's culinary classes and served by members of the Student Council. From former teachers to secretaries, custodians, to school counselors, there's so many valued professional positions within our district, and we just appreciate their years of service for these amazing individuals dedicated to the Oshkosh North students across the decades and their impact in the community, and it was a great day to be able to celebrate with So, we continue, of course, across the district to love to see our students shine. Recently, 22 Vell Phillips Middle School choir students traveled to UW-Milwaukee to be part, to take part in a sing-out, tenor and bass festival. Over 1,000 middle school and high school male choir singers took place to, and came together at UW, UW-Milwaukee to sing together at this annual festival. What was even more amazing was to see 10 of our very own Vell Phillips students auditioning for solos in front of over 400 peers. The students that attended exemplified what it means to rise and represent themselves, their school, and our entire community with pride. So, congratulations to those students that stepped up for that activity. So, well done. I want to thank again everyone who's joined us during our community feedback sessions. We had our second feedback session at Oshkosh North. Attendees had the opportunity to ask questions and tour the auditorium, providing valuable insights into our current facilities, that you highlighted key areas for improvement, including inadequate stage size, accessibility issues, limited staff, limited seating capacity, and resulting in the negative impact on students and programs at Oshkosh North, something that we're looking to rectify as part of the referendum. Community, community members are encouraged to join us at upcoming sessions to share their thoughts and help share, shape the future of education across our community. So, speaking of those sessions, we have four of those sessions that are coming up. So, we have one tomorrow night at Vell Phillips Middle School, and then we have, that's at 6:30, and we have a couple other sessions then across the, across the system that we have at some different times. So, those are the opportunities that are coming forward for us, so we welcome everybody to come out. We'll also be having some recorded updates of our facilities so to make it accessible to everyone also on our website. And special tonight, we want to give a shout-out, lastly, to our school board members tonight since it's appropriate of being a school board meeting on school board, Wisconsin School Board Week. So, just want to take a moment to publicly thank and recognize all of our school board members and for your tireless effort and service to our community. Celebration of Wisconsin School Board Week. This annual celebration serves as a time to build awareness and understanding of the vital function that elected board members of, Board of Education members play in our communities across the state. On behalf of our entire district, we're grateful to have the board's hard work and leadership. Our students benefit every day from the leadership and vision of those around the table tonight. So, again, just want to thank you for all that you do on behalf of our students, families, and staff. So, happy school board week.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And finally, just a list of places. As I said, it's been a very busy couple of weeks, but it's been great to be able to be out in buildings, to be able to see the action happening really across the system. So, we're off to a strong start. And that concludes our Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next, we have District Administrator Supplemental Reports. The first one is the verbal report from the September 25th Listening Session. Mrs. Conrad Peters.
So, in our listening session that took place on September 25th, we actually had one community member speak at that listening session. It was shared that there are concerns about school resource officers, particularly the alignment of their role with district policies and community trust, and there is a desire for transparency about SRO and OASD admin training from this summer. Community member expressed a desire for change following several incidents and was questioning some of the current policies and practices. Questions were raised about the presence, asking if Anthony Miller could be at our listening sessions, and he was this evening. And then the meeting also included positive feedback about the current school year at Vell Phillips, where there is a sense of reset and calm and orderly environment. As follow-up to some of the pieces that were brought, follow-up actions have been assigned to myself and Dr. Coleman, and once again, Mr. Miller was with us this evening at our listening session.
Questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Nihon's Budget Variance Report.
Tonight's report was for the time period through September. Again, there's not a whole lot of data at this point to go through, so the report's pretty light. It is a different format, so this is the format that we will be looking at and going forward. Still working on getting Fund 50 and Fund 80 to be in the same format, but I would expect that to happen by the next, by next month for that reporting. One thing to keep in mind, Fund 50, as my, the staff report said, there's really no data in that right now other than a few expenses for the first month. Fund 80, the Recreation Department, it is running a little bit higher on the expenses side than last year, but we would anticipate some of that, and we did draw down some of the revenue to try to make sure that we don't have quite the surplus as we had last year. We do have quite a balance, so if we do run a little bit over on this year, that, that would be not the worst thing in the world, but as we get further in the year, we would continue to track this just to see where, where that department is running on the fund. Are there any questions at all?
I have one. Do you know why the Recreation Department has expenses running higher? Is there something going on?
There was more programming in the summer, which counts for them because our fiscal year starts July 1, so we were expanding some of their programming. So, expenses for staffing were higher.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Drew.
And next, we have update on enrollment numbers after Third Friday Count. Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Great, good evening. Annually, we report out on what our fall numbers are after our Third Friday Count that is conducted in every school district across the state. As of September 20th, 2024, 9,108 students were counted within the Oshkosh area school district. As we start to look at this, we are slightly declining, and we're just a few students down where we were at this, where we were at this time last year. So, we continue to see that slight decline of enrollment. Another thing that I included in my report was, Dr. Davis had talked about the UW Applied Population Laboratory Study, and within that, I also included the chart that looked at the enrollment projections. One question that had come through from board members was asking within that chart, was the five-year trend, the three-year trend, or the kindergarten trend more likely to be the more accurate trend? And so, since this, everybody's talking about hurricanes right now and spaghetti strings, any one of those three, those are just trend lines based on different data points and could be, you know, I don't know if one or the other is accurate, but no matter what, it is showing that we are slowly, slowly declining. Then on there, I also reported out, you know, if we are considered to be declining, what does, why wasn't there as big of a decline as we were anticipating? Because going from, I believe it was 9,123 last year to 9,108 this year, were we expecting more of a decline? So, one thing that we've seen that has slowed the decline is the increase in enrollment of English-language learners. And so, with that, there was a chart that showed at this time last year, we were at 644 English learners. This year, we are at, now I'm not going to be able to read my.
760.
760, thank you. We were at, we're currently at 760. So, that. So, that right there helped curb some of our anticipated decline. And then the last part of my report talked about open enrollment analysis, and so, we have increased in our open enrollment. And if we take a look at our open enrollment, I want to make sure I have accurate numbers. So, our net last year for the 23-24 school year was negative 266. Our open enrollment this year is, the net is negative 301. So, if we look at that, we had slightly less coming in and just a few more students going out at that, at that piece. So, one of the things that's often asked when it comes to open enrollment, do we know the reasons why? And who may be, why are they coming into our district? And why are they going out of our district? We have, there have many been, there's been studies and there's been many different reasons. They can go anywhere from academics to it's closer to where family is for, due to childcare. There's a lot of different reasons. But what we are doing for strategies is we're currently focusing on promoting our school districts' uniques as retaining and attracting student enrollment. But the big thing in that we've been working on through our different literacy initiatives, making sure that our math curricums in place is really looking at improving our academic achievement and making sure those pieces are key to retaining and keeping our students enrolled, as well as our wide variety of extracurricular activities, as you saw in the superintendent's report, our co-curricular, our dual credit courses, et cetera. And so, are we promoting the good news within our district? And are we promoting our academic success as we're going? In addition to that, we are gathering in a survey that will inform future strategies. It's an exit survey, so if a family is leaving us, you know how sometimes you get that auto survey that says, tell us more about your experience, that is going into place as well to help us gather more information to form strategies. And that concludes my report. Questions?
Dr. Herzog?
I'm really concerned about the open enrollment numbers. They, we have so many things going, so many good things going on in the district, and as I continue to say, I believe we have some of the best teachers in the state of Wisconsin in this district. So, I would really like to see an end to the, the large open enrollment numbers going out and, and would like to see more coming in. I appreciate you have some strategies there, so I'll look forward to next year, excuse me, to see what kind of results have been achieved. I know that Ted Nitski has been telling people who've come to CESA 6, including the Board of Control, that one of his recommendations is that we really target the uniques of our 4K program. I think we have an outstanding program there led by Mrs. Shendel, and I think we, we could do perhaps more to communicate that out. Historically, I think Ashkosh is, overall as a community, we could do better in telling our story and the many positives going on here. And I'm not picking on anybody, I'm not throwing anyone under the bus, I just think we tend to crumble and we tend not to celebrate things that, that should be noted more in the community. So, I'm, I'm really looking forward to results from the strategies here and what other, whatever other strategies administration chooses to do, because the, the how of this belongs to administration, not to the board. So, I, I would just like to see less, fewer students exiting than coming in.
Just a, if I may, just a couple of things off of that. So, one is, if you remember, last year, we did, through our communication department, put together a 4K promotional video to be able to just describe the programming. So, that was something coming off of the referral from, from Ted Nitski at CESA 6. So, we'll continue to get that out in the universe and during open enrollment time as we move forward. I also want to emphasize, and I think this is more maybe from a community standpoint, that we, we are working on strategies and will work on strategies. A lot of what happens in action and people's decisions are individual conversations that happen either in the supermarket or over social media. So, we actually all have an opportunity to be able to influence that on a daily basis. And so, we certainly take responsibility as administrative team and want to make sure that we partner as well as we can with the community to be able to tell those stories. Telling the stories that we have two out of the top three high schools on our school report cards, like that information is very important. When people ask how it's going in the district, it's very important that we talk about the 2.5% increase in reading over last year, the 5.3% in reading over the last three years. Like, those are points that are really important for us to continue to repeat, to make sure that we all have a responsibility to be able to curb that communication, because we know there's a lot of anti-public education communication that's going on both in person and on social media. And so, so I, I just want to just provide that as an opportunity and a, a challenge for us to, to grow as a system, because these are, these are community results. And we know how important the school district is, the public school district is, you know, in the, in the community and for the liveliness and, and our ability to thrive as a community. So, so I just want to also put that out there in addition to the initiatives that we're working on.
Very good.
I guess we'll take on to that too of, and from my perspective, it's not throwing anybody under the bus. It's more of, it's an opportunity for every person to be telling a story. And it is about facts, but it's also about stories. And because behind every kid and every statistic is really what's happening in the classroom, and I think that resonates a lot. So, I really encourage everybody to do what you can and to follow the Facebook pages of what's going on in the schools. Look at what is out there, because there is a lot of things going on in our district that, yes, our district-wide communications people try to do, but they're not, they can't get to all the stories, and it's a lot of work for them, whereas it's not as much work for, you know, when a teacher shares their information on their, with their families and things like that. And pictures matter and stories matter and facts matter too, but we need to resonate with people too.
True. One thing I noticed from this, and then I'll get you, Mrs. Carlin, it seems like we, the biggest decline came during the COVID years.
Yes.
And we really haven't recovered from that. And I'm wondering if you're seeing, if, if the numbers are included of those that are doing at-home learning or in some kind of virtual school?
As far as enrollment in or out, it depends. If they're enrolling out into a virtual, like, public charter school, we would know that. But we also know that there are some families that have chosen to do home, like homeschool, like to school at home versus be, being part of a, a public charter school. So, with that, we do have a full-time e-academy or full-time virtual option. But once again, parents have lots of, parents and families have lots of choices, and they have choices now as far as like where they go to school. What we want to emphasize is what are the things that we're doing here in the Ashkosh area school district? And having an e-academy is one of those things, as well as the 4K center, as well as those opportunities at the high school. We noticed that this year in open enrollment, our two highest areas of students coming into the district were at the 4K level and at the high school level. And so, those were the two areas where we had students actually, like, coming in. And actually, that makes sense, because those are usually the transition, those are transitions into school or getting, re-transitioning into post-secondary with those opportunities.
Thank you. Mrs. Carlin?
Thank you. I just had a question about declining enrollment. We know that nationwide, this, this declining enrollment is not unique to Ashkosh, it's happening across the country, and declining enrollment nationwide is 2.8% of students, and Wisconsin on average is 3.1% of students. But we only lost 13 students last year, and so, we're not even, I don't know what percentage we are, but we're not, we're way below the state average. Do we know how we are doing compared to our peers?
Not yet. There's, this is, this is information that just came out from Third Friday Count. And the other thing is, we're giving you this count, but this is also not certified data yet. So, when you go out onto Wise dash Public Portal, where, you know, it gives you all the information for the year, that becomes certified data. This is what we're reporting, and this is what we reported to the state to be the Third Friday Count. So, to be able to do those comparisons, we need to wait until the certified data comes that we can do comparisons with.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Oh.
Mr.?
Go ahead. Being down 13 students, that's the closest we've come since COVID, as far as potential, you know, adding students. One, one thing in particular that I, I think is an advantage in our high schools is all the CAP courses that we offer. I don't, I don't know how many kids go to private school or neighboring districts and come back, because our high schools offer things that others just don't in the area. And I think that, you know, that's a niche that we have. I think that that's very positive. I mean, the numbers are what they are. It's a very competitive educational environment. Nina, from what I understand, has a wait, has a waitlist since they built their new high school. Wenakani's doing really well there next door. Parents have a lot of options within this 20, 20-mile radius, and that makes everyone up their game, you know? And we're, we're really close right now, right? In my opinion, we're really close on a lot of things. You know, we're starting to see positive trends in our testing scores, right? There's been more advancements in facilities in this community probably in the last 50 years, or, I don't know, maybe ever, right? A long time, you know? So, a lot of, we're getting close with a lot of stuff. A lot of things are happening that are positive. It's just kind of tying it all together. But I'll go back, like, the CAP courses at the high school are a tremendous advantage. And I see you guys shaking your heads, yes. My kid's in one right now. My kid was in a lot of other neighboring districts. She would not have that available to her. And we provide fantastic opportunities for kids. My kids are involved in a bunch of them, between our accelerated learning program, between our CAP courses, between all of our middle school activities. It's truly a district where you can do a lot of things that you can't do in other districts, and you can do them at the highest level if you want to, right? In OASD, you can compete in the highest level in a lot of different things. You know, athletics academically with CAP courses, right? And we need to celebrate that and be proud of that. I mean, our kids are completing, competing at the highest level in a lot of things on a regular basis. So, those are my thoughts.
Dr. House?
I think I want to ask what Beth asked, but maybe in a slightly different manner.
Okay.
I think my question is, for the potential homeschool kids, are they, are they required to report to anyone where we would know what the entire population of eligible kids are in our district? Or is that something they don't have to report? And, and so, we just don't understand, you know, I'm kind of curious, what percentage of kids could we, do we get relative to what is in the population? And maybe we don't have access to that.
Yeah. So, I think what you're asking is, of the students that live in the bound, in the boundaries of the Ashkosh area school district?
Right.
How many of them are actually, like, what's the percentage that's actually enrolled in the Ashkosh area school district? And then there may be students that are in private parochial or maybe homeschool. And we know that children or families that are homeschooling their children have to report that to the DPI, and then that, then that triggers us being able to count within that. So, our adjusted head count, which would mean how many students do we know of that live in the Ashkosh area school district, is 9,357.
Okay.
So, I'm not going to be, not going to be able to do like quick math to return that back around.
9,357, but we're saying we have. Yeah, then.
Like, our head count is, the students that are in, that were in seats on September 20th was 9,108.
So, 249. Is that what I'm?
But, but don't we think there's 600-some at Lord's and, and just doing the voucher program alone, right?
Correct.
I mean, I don't, I don't know. I'm just kind of curious, do we have access to?
But you have to, yeah, we do, actually, we do have access that, of that, like, in and out. But also, keep in mind that our private school partners, and by the way, they are, they are great partners with us and working with us, whether it's Valley Christian or Lord's, et cetera, they are also receiving students from other surrounding districts besides just Ashkosh. So, when, when you have that enrollment count, just please keep that in mind. But like, we can look at what are, what's our numbers, and then like, what's the percentage of students that we keep within our school district? I think that's what you're asking for.
Right.
Okay.
And, and then on the, the English language learners, that substantial increase in the report, do we know that the majorities are all coming from refugee background or?
So, it's, it's not, it, like, it, we know who has, who has indicated to us that they have that background, but we also have newcomers and other immigrants that are coming, that are coming to us. So, it can't be, it can't be totally assumed that every single one of those increases is because of a, a student or family with refugee background.
Thank you. I'll go there.
It's very interesting. Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, Dr. Herzog. I just had one question. I'm wondering if it would be possible for you to share with us the, the five-year trend of early childhood, that is, the 4K and the high school numbers? You indicated that those have gone up, and I'm sure part of that is, as Mr. Wright articulated, with our AP classes and so on, and our variety of extracurricular activities for students. I don't think we can overlook the fact, though, that 116 of, 116 new students come from our English. Language learners and students with refugee backgrounds. Some of those, Dr. House, could be students who came to this country, lived in another state, but they moved here, what they call secondary migration, because they have family here or they're, there's a job or something to attract them. I think another reason for that increase could be attributed to the excellent ESOL program that this district has offered over a period of time. The district has made a commitment over time to making sure that we're serving all students, including those of, of refugee background and, and those whose first language is not English, in addition to the community that has a lot of resources that support newcomers to the community generally. So, to me, it's a, it's a community opportunity to serve all of our students and to attract and retain students of other backgrounds into our community, something I celebrate. Thank you.
Mrs. Dewan?
I just wanted to say thank you. I believe that when I first came onto the board here, I had asked, when we had discussions about this enrollment, and I had asked about an exit survey, so I'm happy to hear that. That is something that is going out, so we're able to know exactly why families and parents are deciding to go elsewhere. So, thank you for that.
Yeah. Related to that could be, is, when will there be a, like, would it be after first year? Will this be the first year that that's being done, and when would we be able to hear a report on it?
Yeah, correct. And I would say that perhaps like at the, and, like, we would have to collect some data, so perhaps like at the end of the year, maybe in a summer, like, summer report to start to do that. But we'll mon, like, we'll monitor, like, what the information is, is coming in, so.
Yeah. I think the natural reporting would be this report next year, as we would, you know, draw those themes out from the year's worth of collection.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Conrad Peters?
I was thinking, I think I'm up next for this part.
Phase two planning update?
Phase two planning update. All right. So, this will be, I have a feeling this will be the first of many updates that I'll be giving, be giving you on phase two planning, and we'll be, we are shifting out of phase one into phase two. So, instead of Mr. Fox talking to you about phases and planning and projects, you will have me for that presentation each, each month. So, for, one thing that I want to highlight is the Ashkosh area school district has a webpage, and what we're committed to is making sure that we have information on the webpage, which I like to call static. In other words, you know exactly where you can go in a click or two to receive information about the questions that you have. And so, on the Ashkosh area school district page, anything that has to do with phase two planning, with feedback, et cetera, all you have to do is click directly on facilities, and then you come on down, and it brings you to a facilities page. And in there, we can look at upcoming community feedback sessions, we can see the schedule, please reach out to schedule a presentation. But over on the left-hand side are what our facilities consolidation plan is, what happened in phase one, but most importantly, what our phase two planning is right now. And so, if you click on our phase two planning-
And so if you click on our phase two planning, and by the way, this was captured in the staff report, but I really wanted to show this to the community and to the board, you come on in and everything that starts from the beginning of our phase two planning, leading to where we currently are in feedback sessions, is laid out. And so you can click on each of those tiles to go through what is phase two consolidation. It will provide an overview of the consolidation and what we are planning, community engagement, and in particular, our community feedback sessions. These are, be updated each time that we have them. We have a community feedback session, as Dr. Davis mentioned, coming up tomorrow night. Please join us, October 10th, at Vell Phillips Middle School. And from those feedback sessions, because community members have been, they've been emailing me from off the webpage, and then also at the feedback sessions, they want to say, is this really feedback? Are you giving us, like, are we, are you really taking the information that we're providing? And the answer is yes. Because within that, the feedback and the questions that they're asking, we have put together an FAQ, our frequently asked questions page. And so if you are a community member that has emailed me, you've provided written feedback from a feedback session and/or you completed the survey after the session with QR code, all of those questions are listed here. And another way to give feedback or have questions, still have questions, come see us or come ask us. And by the way, community members are emailing me, they are not afraid to email me and ask questions. So please do. I'm happy to, I'm happy to help with that. So here you can see some of the questions that community members are asking and we are getting feedback on. So like, for example, one of the first questions is, what is being considered in phase two of the consolidation plan? So it talks more about that and gives that specific information. Let's see. Here is one that comes up is right here is, why is the district seeking to move forward with this plan now given concerns about rising taxes, reassessments, and tough economic times? And so we have, we try to be succinct. Taxes and financing is always, isn't concise, but we try. But it talks about our long-term financial planning, the cost of waiting, et cetera. So all of those pieces that are being asked are here. I believe there is also questions where we have concerned families, like, for example, do bigger, do bigger schools mean more students per class? That was asked at a community session. And so going through here that, no, it does not. What it means is, is that we still use the same ratios, but we're being more, we are looking to be more efficient in providing full-time services for students in one spot. So all of those, all of those FAQs are there. In addition to that, if I go back to phase two planning on here, we come on down and there are specifics from the feedback sessions that have already been conducted. So for example, if we go into South Park, it provides a session overview. It gives our FAQ page. It gives key observations from the tour. But on here, when you go into the, and I'm missing one, QA sessions, it goes into there, it really provides more information, once again, on what people were asking from those particular tours. Because that was a few, a few of our board members, you had asked, you know, how do we know, like, that's, that's great that we just had an overview, but I want to know what people are asking. And these FAQs are what individuals, what individuals are asking. Also on here is that each of our sessions, we are providing guided tours and we're giving information on what people are saying after guided tours. Also, within here, you can get the actual presentation and additional topics, et cetera, that were discussed on those particular days. So I encourage community members, I encourage you as a board, to go out and see the information that we are collecting as we are working with our community. So I'll pause. Questions?
I appreciate everything that's on the website. There's obviously a ton of information on there. I have a couple of very specific things and I'm also a little, I know you're trying to make an effort to make this user-friendly. It still is also, if we are looking at a variety of voters, people who have limited literacy, who are really busy, it's a lot of words. Can we please consider using images, infographics, other ways to connect with voters as well who need to be informed about this? And also very specifically, can we at least put a dummy page on Oshkosh, on the website's backslash referendum? Because people are referring to this as a referendum and it's not, nothing. Nothing is on there for it right now. And so I think if people do what is one of the most logical ways of searching for this, they're not finding any information. But then, so is every question that is asked at these information sessions being added to these FAQs?
To the FAQ. Now, I wouldn't say that, like, if it was phrased this way, then it's added to that, you know, like, it may be the same question but phrased in different ways. It's like, it's consolidated. But yes, every question that was at the, so if you're a community member and you asked a question or you had a comment, you should see that reflected in the FAQ.
And they're not separated out by which, which?
No.
Because I'm just looking, I'm like, I know there were some, lots of questions about, I, okay, I see them.
I want to say there's, there was a lot of questions about a 4K center, so for example. And so this was an additional topic that was discussed specifically at the North feedback session. And so when we're finding that there, there are topics that community members or individuals want to dive deeper into, we are, we are kicking that out, are highlighting that there as well.
I'm just a little concerned that, yeah, there's a lot of information on here, but people still might not feel like it's accessible because there's so much information. And I think as we get more and more FAQs, they'll be more logically organized perhaps under groupings and things like that. But it's, I think that, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of great information, it's just getting to it, which is the challenge with every website.
And thank you for the feedback. The other thing for our website, we were trying to do that, is also we know that there is translate. It may not be the best.
This is not, yeah.
I know. But when you're looking for that, that is, that is up there. But yeah, we're cognizant of that and thank you for that. Thank you for the feedback.
I would continue to emphasize, the more that we can use images to, to help tell the story, is a way of communicating with people in a way that may not have English capabilities, like, maybe our voters.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you up here for every board meeting.
Every other board meeting.
Every other board meeting.
I'll be here.
And other reports. Does any committee, I don't believe we have any other committee reports for this evening. Okay. Moving on to non-agenda related public forum. And we'll see who we have.
Just Jean.
Jean, please state clearly your name, the city in which you reside, the topic you wish to address. Please state clearly and incisely the matters of concern and limit your comments to three minutes. Please remember the use of specific names of district personnel, titles, or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jean Erdman and I live in Oshkosh. I want to start by saying that to name a problem is not to be negative. To name a problem is the first step to solving the problem. And the problem that I'd like to name is that of racism. It's not a negative thing about, it is negative wherever it exists. It exists in Oshkosh, but it also exists all over the United States, in my opinion. And now I'm gonna, after Molly's comment, I'm going to move to a story. It's called "The Fabric Store." Some Fridays, we walk to downtown Greenville where there are some clothing stores and some restaurants. A motel, a five-and-dime, it's an old phone. But my grandmother won't take us into any of those places anymore, even the five-and-dime, which isn't segregated now. But where a woman is paid, my grandmother says, to follow people of color around in case they try to steal something. We don't go into the restaurants because they always seat us near the kitchen. When we go downtown, we go to the fabric store where the white woman knows my grandmother. They discuss drape and nap and where to cinch, the waist on a skirt for a child. At the fabric store, we are not colored or negro. We are not something such as thieves or shameful or something to be hidden away. At the fabric store, we are just people. Okay? I found this poem because I've heard from children of some of the name-calling that children of color are being exposed to by their peers on the street or just when they're out in public. And I think we're making genuine efforts to address that through our programming and through our value statements and our actions as a district. I've said before how much I really appreciate and feel close to the Oshkosh area school district. I also would like to thank Dr. Davis for his openness to the community. I would like to suggest that the district make it a priority this year to prepare ahead of time as much as possible to hire more faculty and staff of color and see if we can't have some deans of students and principals also of color in place a year from now. I would also like to plead with the citizens of Oshkosh that you treat people of color in the community with the same kindness that you would treat your white neighbors and your friends and your family members. The actions of every individual do indeed make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or is discussed at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Period. Is there a motion?
Second.
Carolyn and Wright?
Rick?
Yep.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
She's calling your name.
She's calling the roll.
Smoothly.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Hesel.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Request for future agenda items. Announcements.
I do have one. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards is hosting several fall advocacy workshops called Amplifying Our Voice, which should help school board members understand their role in interacting with their lawmakers and being an advocate for the needs of our schools and our school districts. All of you should have received a brochure on this and probably an email from your Region Seven representative, namely me. And if you're not able to attend the meetings in the various CISOs, there is an online workshop on Tuesday, November 19th. And I'd encourage everyone, especially those on the legislative committee, to give that some thought. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now adjourn to executive session where we'll be considering the disciplinary data of a specific person. I will review expulsion recommendation from an expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others. So moved.
Second. Carolyn, Dewitt. Smoothly.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Resolution carries. You're going to have a jury of your session.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, students.